Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, January 27, 2021, meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing contract negotiations, potential litigation, the employment history of particular persons, matters of health and safety, and to receive advice of council. May I have a motion to reconvene the public session?
Second move, second, all in favor, please say aye. And now please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by the Congress.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll start my president's report today by discussing just a few observations that I'd like to mention about the themes that were highlighted during the January 20 presidential inauguration. These were themes that were delivered on a national platform, but they are so relevant to every level of government, and even the most local, in our own town and school district. As elected officials, we must always be mindful of the preciousness of our democracy. We must all be mindful of it, that it can never be assumed or taken for granted, that it's in constant need of renewal. The phrase "a more perfect union" is a call to continual improvement. And another phrase, "we the people," is the cornerstone of our democracy. And as elected officials, "we the people" is our guide to how we should exercise the authority we've been given by the people. "We the people" is the call to unity, to listen, hear, and respect one another, to being inclusive and responsive to those we represent. And it's our role as leaders to express a clear vision for our future and provide pathways for meaningful engagement and inclusive public participation, bringing us to a collective and unified vision that we can all be proud of. So today, we are still looking and talking about a proposed form-based code legislation. This is major local legislation. It would transform our town at the very moment that we're struggling with one of the greatest health crises in history. So we are still navigating the challenges of the COVID-19 global health pandemic, which has taken over 400,000 lives in the U.S. alone. And the numbers, of course, keep changing. And in the millions worldwide, almost 2,000 in Westchester County. We are way past the second wave with the emergence of different virus strains with higher infection rates. I listened to the last public hearing on a form-based code on January 19, and someone said, "This was one of the most stressful times of our lives." And this was not hyperbole, it is reality. In our school district, our top current priority is the safety and physical and mental well-being of our students, and by extension, our community. It's to educate those students in unprecedented times and provide the emotional safety net of interaction with peers and teachers in a climate free of bias and bigotry. This is what children so desperately need, and this is what we are supposed to be focusing on now. On January 13, we had a joint board session with the town board to take a first look at a slide deck presentation by our consultants regarding the form-based code. This initial first look showed an analysis of the DG EIS. It showed, for instance, that if the DG EIS assumption of two-thirds one-bedroom versus one-third two-bedroom ratio were adopted, you'd have an enrollment increase of about 150 students. But if that ratio were flipped, as we see happen more realistically in Chappaqua, enrollment increase would go to about 255 and possibly to 300 if it were higher. As for now, we've seen no assurances that the town can impose a set number of bedrooms per residential units without resulting litigation. At one town board meeting, I believe they were told that they could not do it, and at another, there was some indecisiveness, but there's no clear indication. There are other reasons why these numbers can be higher. A geographic multiplier was used, as the consultants explained, because anything more granular would not generate enough data, and the analysis was therefore unable to address accurately enough our district's pattern of people moving here almost exclusively for the schools. There is not enough information also at this time to analyze the impact on enrollment of COVID-related moves from the city to suburbs. But we are aware of recent increases in the sale of houses to families with children, and homes are now selling at a faster rate than before. For some reason, it seemed from the last town public hearing on January 19 that the town board was eager to take the lowest estimate as the final analysis. So we here on the school board talk a lot about developing a growth mindset and to analyze problems from an inquiry-based approach. I would ask that the town board show more curiosity and more inquiry, rather than an eagerness to justify the lowest possible numbers. I would refer you to page 38 of the slide deck, which shows the higher enrollment projections with the different ratios of one versus two or three-bedroom units, highlights the need to consider the impact of real estate sales and backfill issues, and not knowing the full effect of COVID on the economy. There are a few other issues that we will put together for the town board. Some of them are student safety regarding construction and increased traffic and the build-out of numerous residential units on top of Bell Middle School. There are also issues of pilots, payments in lieu of taxes, and other tax abatements to large-scale developments given to developers by Westchester Industrial Development Agencies, payments in lieu of taxes to encourage certain kinds of developments. We and the town board would have no control over that process. I'm familiar with how this has had considerable negative impact on school districts from the advocacy I've worked, I've done on behalf of other school districts on the Westchester Butnam School Boards Association, where I served for the last seven to eight years. And I know that many other school districts deal with the impact of pilots on their tax base, and it's extremely detrimental. So after we receive the final report from our consultants, we will be submitting written comments containing all of our concerns as part of the public hearing process. So I would just like to add clarification to a few things. There were complaints about the timing of the town board receiving our consultant's presentation slide deck. This was not a final report, it was a presentation. We have seen draft of pages of the slide deck a few days prior, and it is unreasonable to expect that a draft of a work in progress be sent out. We received the final slide deck presentation on January 13, the day of the presentation, when it was sent to the town board and posted on our website for the whole community to see. We have not yet received an actual final report from the consultants. I want to say a couple of things on the issue of redistricting, because there was a misrepresentation of something I said at the last public hearing. I had said that with increased enrollment at Grafflin Elementary School and Bell Middle School, we would have to look at redistricting. But there was a lengthy comment based on a misrepresentation that I had said we would not redistrict, so I really need to correct the record. We will redistrict if we have to, according to what is allowed under the law. There's been, since I'm at it, and I was not going to address this issue, but since I'm talking about some misrepresentations and correcting the record, I do want to talk about a concept that seems to have come out of thin air and has been discussed at length at past town board meetings. And this is a concept of fair share in paying taxes. This is a foreign concept on the school board. We can have a house with 10 or zero children in it, and we make no issue of it. Our students live in houses, condos, and rentals, and we make no distinction among them. But when a proposal to add about 1,000 corporate-grade units to our town is proposed, we do have a fiduciary obligation to discuss the issues of tax base with our constituent taxpayers. I know and I heard the town board members say that they hope the board of ed will work in collaboration with the town board, which implied that we were not. So we would like to clarify that we've done everything we could to engage the town board in a collaborative manner. We have sought collaboration despite not being invited to participate in a downtown working group. We have sought collaboration despite not being contacted after the town board did not hear from us, having posted a notice for their scoping session. We sought collaboration prior to last May when we sent an email and had a meeting asking for more information. We sought collaboration in our first request in September, asking for an extension to the public hearing, when our request was ignored, and we got a lesson and scolding on our mistakes in interpreting the DG EIS we had just received. We have sought collaboration despite being the subject of hostile and divisive comments on social media, which we have chosen to overlook. We continue to seek collaboration despite continued misinterpretations. I understand that at the January 19 public hearing, we were admonished for not being collaborative, because we sent a letter to our community to share our process with everyone, to be transparent, and to explain that we were continuing the engagement process with our consultant. I am sorry to note that the town board believed they learned of this only through that letter, but we clearly stated at our joint work session with the town board that this was a first look, and we would be continuing to give input and seeking feedback with our consultants. So I'm not sure how they felt they were not aware of it. I'd like to be clear that the Board of Education and entire school district is committed to welcoming and educating all children who move into and live in our school district. I will note that I've been sad to see the existence of a false paradigm, that either you are against, that either you are for this particular proposed form-based code legislation, or you are against diversity and inclusion. For myself, being part of the BIPOC community, I'm offended by the use of race in the false narrative. It is divisive. It makes people afraid of speaking and participating in the public sphere, participation that our democracy depends on. If increased diversity is the goal, we should have heard that from the downtown planning group. There are ways to bring about diversity in housing without resorting to a form-based code legislation. We are not here to be for or against the form-based code, but we are against false narratives. We, together with many in our community, share the values of inclusion and diversity. We are done with the politics of division. We the people want a more perfect union right here in our town. We seek unity in a common vision and shared goals arrived at through an inclusive and fair process that would reveal a community that we are and that we can be proud of. So the town board has asked for a meeting with us on next Tuesday. At this time, we are seeking more information from our consultants and a final report. And I would think that it would be advisable to have a meeting or to talk about our next steps after that's happened. And I propose getting back to the town supervisor to that effect. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the school board and see if you have any opinions on this and on requests for a meeting with the town board next Tuesday.
No, I assume that we need to make sure that we have vital information before we feel like we're in a position to move on.
Okay. All right then. So I will write back to Supervisor Ivy Cool that we will look to getting back to her on that after we receive more information from our consultants. Okay. Yeah. Now we're ready for superintendent's report. Now is there something else that the board members would like to add?
I have a couple.
Oh, sorry, all right, okay.
I received a letter from Dean Rock, who's, I think, one of the co-chairs of the STEM Fest at the middle schools, with a specific reality. And that's going to be on March 20. He was wondering if they're presumably doing it a little differently. They're having a homemaking project, and they'll be doing three to five-minute videos on STEM projects. He was wondering if the Board of Education, members of the board, would mind being proud to review those. So I think it's a great thing. They reached out to us. You know, they're trying to, as he said, we're trying to accommodate the situation, make it better, right? And he wants to make sure that the kids will have the opportunity to do a STEM project. And we get community members and Board of Education, and instructors and teachers be part of this. So I thought I'd have Tom bring this up to the board, and that we would reach back and tell them. So I think, you know, if I want to do it. And it's interesting, because I guess one of the Dallas students won the national prize, and one of the first projects was at STEM Fest. So I think it seems a great starting point.
I think that sounds wonderful. I'd love to participate.
Yeah, I'm just glad I provided the board.
It's a lot of no detail.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree. That sounds like a lovely idea. I enjoyed going to the STEM Fest when it was in the building, so would love to be able to participate virtually.
So it's going to be a virtual STEM Fest.
It does sound fantastic.
Victoria.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Thank you, Christine. Okay, so welcome, everyone, to our meeting. I just want to begin by saying we, at the end of this week, although I know the high school has concluded semester one, we've made it through a happy year of school with only one day that was fully remote, and that was today due to the weather. So I think it's a testament to all the work that we've done collectively as a community, teachers, parents, administrators, and of course, the Board of Education, your leadership and being in a place where not many other districts are, and supporting our kids in the way that we have. So I just want to issue my congratulations. And it's very fitting that we have some of our faculty who'll be presenting tonight to share with you some of the good work that's been happening over the course of the first semester. So I'd like to transition over to Adam, who will introduce our presenters this evening.
Thank you, Christine. Just move some chairs here for a minute, so Justin and Mary can come up to the mic, and David can pull up that presentation. Back in the fall, we were asked to present at a regional conference and share some of our distance learning and hybrid learning practices here in the district that we have learned over the preceding months. So I have Mary Devine and Justin Olive with me here today. We have a small but mighty professional development team. You've heard quite a bit about them over the last few years. Justin Olive is brand new to the team this year. We recruited him out of Bell, who was a science teacher. I know he's taught at least one of your children, as you mentioned, so maybe two. So.
When was the new teacher to the district? He taught my daughter his first year.
Was it like first?
Yes.
First, it was, yeah. So 12, 13 years ago.
And they knew it, too. They knew it was your first year, so. Too hard of a time.
So Justin brings a science background to the team, which is nice, and also fills our capacity in middle school. And Mary Devine, many of you know her from her years at Greeley. She's our social studies representative on the team. Or Devine's K-12 Social Studies. But I think we asked them all to support so many different initiatives for the district. You'll see their work periodically throughout tonight and also other meetings. I'm sure you've seen it in the past. So they actually brought, we have a team of our faculty members here. What they did for this conference that they presented at was a professional development conference for teachers, and we highlighted some of our remote learning strategies, distance learning, hybrid learning strategies for other teachers in the region. I thought it was such a fantastic presentation, because it was such a nice window into our classrooms and the experiences that our students have, all the way from our elementary schools all the way up through Greeley. So they're going to showcase a few lessons with some help from our faculty, who are going to zoom in here and help us out. Again, this is just a kind of a snapshot of some of the lessons that our students have experienced. We thought it would give the Board of Education and the community a really nice opportunity to see some of the transformations that our teachers have made as we've navigated this kind of hybrid world during the pandemic. So I'll turn it over to Mary and Justin. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Adam. We are so excited to be here this evening to share with you what teachers are doing. When Adam asked us back in the fall to present at this conference, Justin and I just sort of looked at each other. We knew exactly what to do. In the fall, we were supporting and working with so many teachers, and we were just really amazed with so much that teachers are doing, the innovation. And so we basically chose four different teachers to sort of highlight at the conference to really help our colleagues around the region learn from our experience and to really sort of, you know, help our colleagues throughout the region. So we're going to be doing four different case studies from elementary through high school, and we're going to start off with Justin really sort of explaining what we mean by teaching transformed.
I'm starting us off by framing the transformational journey that's really taking place in education in general, but then more specifically in our classrooms in the district. It began with the COVID crisis, and that brought forth just an instant paradigm shift. On a Friday afternoon, our teachers went home with their weekend bag, and then on Monday morning, they end up delivering their classes in an entirely new setting remotely in our e-learning initiative. We were forced to adjust, rebuild, and adapt completely on the fly. What you see here is what the phases we carried out over the next few months. The three Ts, which is actually a crisis response method, but it's a perfect description of how we adapted to the brand-new mode of instruction. The first few weeks was triage, where really we had to stabilize. And teachers focused on the main question of how can we urgently create a level of stability for our students and their learning? That took some time, but then that led us into the transition mode. Once we were in the transition mode, our driving question really shifted to what are some of the vulnerabilities or potential obstacles that exist in this new approach, and what changes can we implement to overcome them? And more recently, we started to observe transformational practices, where we are thinking about the post-pandemic world and which practices we're currently engaging in that will come with us to the future classroom. Our voices from the field tonight plan to give us insight into some of the ways that we have moved through this continuum and some of their personal lesson plans and projects, and how they fit into the overall bigger picture. So the first stage we were in was the first few weeks of the school year would be the triage. And Mary and I are staff developers, so we have the privilege of being able to move from classroom to classroom, and we can witness the different ways that teachers were transferring some of their traditional practices to our current hybrid environment. So what we observed was that teachers were leveraging learning management systems that we had, Google Classroom, Seesaw at the elementary school, Canvas at the secondary schools, and integrating them with digital tools in a way so that they could provide an effective and worthwhile learning experience for all the students. There was a bit of a learning curve, but after a few weeks, teachers and learners seemed to get into a comfortable flow, and we began to rise to the challenge of exploring new ways to have fun and exciting learning experiences.
So as teachers really got their footing and they started to stabilize, we really began to see transition. And what we saw here is that there were projects, activities, lessons that teachers before COVID were, that teachers loved doing. They were very successful, and they had to figure out how to adapt them to this hybrid environment. And so our first case study is going to come from Seven Bridges Middle School. Alex Ligeret, an eighth-grade science teacher, is going to showcase what he and the whole eighth-grade science team at both Bell and Seven Bridges, they really innovated and transitioned a great engineering science project.
Hello, and thanks, Mary, for the introduction, and thank you for having me. I wanted to share tonight a project that the eighth-grade students worked on that centered around collaboration and teamwork during our hybrid instruction. On the next slide, you can see what we're really focusing on here was having students, how can we have students facilitate small group work with students in different locations? So I wanted to walk you through that process and show you what that looked like during this time of hybrid instruction. On the next slide, I'll actually begin to walk you through what the project was. At the beginning of the year, we had students begin to go through the science and engineering practices. This included asking questions, planning, creating, and making modifications when they needed to on these different designs. At the end of our first unit on forces of motion, the question was asked, "How could understanding Newton's laws of motion help students save Halloween from COVID-19?" And students were then asked to think about how they typically hand out Halloween candy at their houses on a normal year, and how they could make that safer during this time of socially distancing with COVID-19. So it was an authentic question and an authentic task, and kids really took it to heart and started to think hard about this new question. And from this, they began to think about solutions they could do at their houses. So one of the first things we did was have students scout their locations and think about the different locations where they could potentially hand out candy in a different manner, and think about the forces of motions that might be implied when they do that. After students did their scouting, we had them break into teams, and we had decided to give each team a different role, each member a different role on that team. One of those roles was specifically to be the COVID safety enforcer, to ensure that when they were working at school and when they were working at home, they were being safe and being mindful of their actions and what they were sharing if there were any materials at the school. Once they started their actual teamwork, there were some specific project requirements that we asked them to follow. Among them was to actually have the candy travel a distance of three meters without being touched by the host or while being given to the trick-or-treater. And there were some specific data and calculations that we worked on throughout the year that we wanted them to also do as well, around Newton's second law of force equals mass times acceleration. On the next slide, I wanted to show you a few of the steps of the engineering process and what students were doing during this as they collaborated, both at home and at school. So it started off with a planning process, and students, whether they were remote or in person, worked together to begin to plan and implement their ideas using Google Drawings and Jamboards and different platforms. They were able to communicate their ideas. On the left-hand side, you can see there's an image of just the students brainstorming of how they were going to use a railing to deliver that candy and use the acceleration of gravity to allow for the force of the candy to reach the bottom to the trick-or-treater. After they went through the planning phase, we started to have them create prototypes in the school. These were oftentimes smaller versions of what they were going to eventually design at their houses. And among these creations, they oftentimes had to think about what materials they would need and what was working and what wasn't working, and from there began to make improvements on it. And then I wanted to just share on the last slide, actually, what the final presentations looked like. You may have seen this video before, it was on Twitter as well. But in the video, it shows not only their final designs and presentations, but also some of the calculations that students had to go through during this entire process. So really, not just building something, but using their understanding of forces of motion to draw force diagrams to explain what the force was based on its mass and acceleration of the candy. So I just wanted to share this video, and thank you for letting me share this presentation.
Thank you, Alex. And I can truly attest that through the entire month of October, when you walked around Bell and Seven Bridges, all we saw were students busily working on these projects. The students really were engaged in this. Thank you. Our next case study that we're going to look at is at Greeley. In AP US History, we have Elizabeth Mizini Chin and her partner James In AP US History, we have Elizabeth Mizini Chin and her partner James Knight, he can't be with us this evening, but Elizabeth is going to share with us some more transition that's taking place in US history.
I wanted to start with, if you can go to the next slide. In Teaching APUSH, we are always trying to think about how to engage in research and discussion-rich PBLs while in the hybrid remote setting. And so, one of our ideas this year for our early project was the Constitutional Convention. And the best part of the convention in a school year where we are not remote is there's a buzz, and an energy, and an excitement in the live interaction, and the podium speaking, and sort of, you know, back and forth negotiations. So, we wanted to mimic that this year in the hybrid remote setting. So we started thinking, and one of the first things we came up with is to have students represent their factions and their role as a Constitutional Convention participant, so they would have their names changed to Hamilton, Madison, Pygny, so that students could refer to each other by their name of the role that they were representing. And then, to mimic the experience of a caucus, which in real-time in the classroom, students would be able to get up and move around, we had to sort of figure out a way to do that. So what we did was have students be able to move on their own from room to room in the breakout rooms, and be able to choose which faction they wanted to negotiate with to come up with a new plan that was made of multiple factions and decision-making, which is just the end result of that one. So that was one of the first projects. The second project that we worked on that was also transformative was the People's History of the Market Revolution podcast. And for this one, we wanted to ensure that our students still were able to use these really important primary sources, like the Cherokee letters on the Trail of Tears, and narratives of the enslaved, and we wanted to do this in an exciting and engaging way. So we decided to switch it up from text-based discussion to something that we called the Fishbowl, Electronic Fishbowl, and chat. So for this one, students pre-read their narratives and primary sources, and came in, and then addressed a series of three or four questions, depending on which class it was, and these challenging questions were overarching for all the topics that they had read. And then what the students were to do in their breakout room was unmute and discuss, and sort of not take any notes, just discuss, and then determine who was going to be an expert for each of the questions. And then the expert was going to go into the Fishbowl in the whole class when we returned from our breakout rooms, and they would serve as an expert to start the conversation about the particular topic that they were working on. And while that was happening, the rest of their classmates were using the chat to support those in the Fishbowl with further information, or challenging their ideas, or coming up with a supporting document that helped confirm that that idea or that point was accurate. And so, this was an amazing thing to watch, because it was every single student had a role and was engaged, and they rotated through their roles. So everyone participated in the breakout rooms, everyone had a chance to be in the Fishbowl, and also, everyone participated in the chat. And the chat also gave students an opportunity to say things that they might not have felt as comfortable saying when they're in the center forum in the Fishbowl. It was so great, and it worked out so well with full engagement, that I brought it to the social studies department, and so some other grade teachers have tried it, and the ninth grade just did it with the Confucian ideologies, and they said it was great and had so much fun also. So it's definitely something that we're going to have to figure out how to use when we stop being remote and hybrid.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth. If we can go to the next slide. Here's an illustration of the diagram of what an electronic fishbowl looks like. And I can say that, you know, adapting the Constitutional Convention to Zoom was a real transition, okay? The electronic fishbowl is a real transformation, and I've seen it explode throughout all the different social studies classrooms. So it's really something, as Elizabeth said, they're going to carry on. If we could go to the next slide. Our next example of real transformation as well is from Lebo Valencia, if we can go to Lebo's slide. And Lebo is a math teacher also at Greeley, and he's going to share with us some technology tools that he is using to transform his teaching. Welcome, Lebo.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you for having me. So one of the challenges that we faced at the beginning of the school year was to, how to best engage students in mathematics while under our hybrid model? So the first tool that I have been using is Desmos. Desmos is a fantastic platform for both live instruction and also student projects. I have two examples in here. The one on the left came from my pre-calculus classes. I asked students to come up with an art, like a Greeley art project using rational functions, and they, like, my mind was blown away, because like, the projects that they did were so, they were so amazing. And then on the right side, this was actually a lesson that we did in geometry. Students were studying the equation of a line, y equals mx plus b. So using Desmos, what we had them do was land the planes using the equation of a line. So the equation of a line will determine the path of the plane, and if it didn't land correctly, it will go back. So really, for the students, some of the feedback that we got was that they felt like they were playing a game and using math, so that was great. So Desmos is a fantastic tool. Another tool that we have been using is Geogebra. So Geogebra is fantastic for visualizing math concepts and also for math play. I have a couple of examples here. The one on the left came from a geometry class, where I asked the students to go around their house, get out of the chair, get off-screen to him, take a picture of a triangle, and then prove or disprove that the triangle was a right triangle. And it was really amazing what the students did using Geogebra. Some of them used the angle, some of them used distance, using the Pythagorean theorem, so it was really nice. The examples on the right side, one of them is a visualizing and optimization problem in breakout, and the one on the bottom, we did at the beginning of the school year, and that's actually a game of Battleship in polar coordinates. It was a fantastic experience for the students. This was earlier, like, I think it was in September or October. So we had the students that were at Greeley that day play the students that were at home through Geogebra. So it was fantastic, the students had a great time, and got, of course, to practice polar coordinates. So Desmos and Geogebra are the two tools, two of the tools that I'm using the most. And then, in terms of strategies to engage students, one of the things that I have always found helpful is using real-life applications. I have a couple of examples here from geometry. When we were first introducing the definitions of like points, lines, and planes, we did a sports application with soccer, but it could really be applied to any sport. So we said that the points were the players, the plane was the field, and then it allows the students to make connections and see the math beyond the classroom. And then on the right side, we also have, this is also an example from geometry, where students look for polygons in real life, so of course they have the stop sign, which is an octagon, and the pentagon. And another strategy that I found very, very useful and effective, especially at the beginning of the school year, to get students to talk and participate on Zoom, is the which one does not belong? So students are presented with a question that has four choices, and I make it seem like there's only one right choice, but there isn't. An argument can be made for all the choices, so this really gets students to participate, engage, and I think it's A because of whatever reason, I think it's B for whatever reason, and in reality, they're all right. This is also very helpful for like Monday morning, course one, first period, students are like half asleep, you put something like this, and it gets them going, it gets them to talk. You could use it for math, but it doesn't have to be just necessarily math. I have my geometry class that are big Star Wars fans, so I've used the one on the right side, and I couldn't get them to stop talking. So the tools that I've been using, and the strategies that I'm using now, mainly because of the pandemic, are strategies that I would like to continue to implement, whether I'm teaching remote or in person.
Thank you, Lebo. If you go to the next slide. So as Lebo shows, he can take those engagement strategies into the classroom post-COVID. Andrea, we're going to go to West Orchard now, and Andrea Shaver, the library media specialist, is going to share with us some inquiry work that has really transformed her practice.
Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having me. So I'm really honored to be presenting on behalf of our elementary students, even though these are some pretty tough acts to follow. These educators and students are so inspirational, and have me thinking a lot about how we're preparing our youngest learners by providing them with opportunities to engage in deep critical thinking, project-based learning, and inquiry, where we're supporting student engagement and ownership in ways that are developmentally appropriate and really focused on some of these best practices. So our challenge this year was about how to continue to incorporate inquiry-style learning through hybrid instruction. And for our library curriculum, this includes incorporating digital citizenship, digital literacy, and resources and databases, and research methods to support all content areas. Our constraints at this level are based around our hybrid teaching model, where our special area teachers are teaching live to an entire grade level at once, which can be anywhere from 65 to 90 students. So my biggest question was, how do we keep this work meaningful and engaging while really reaching learners at all levels? So while working to create these lessons, what I realized was that we don't need to choose between our workshop model, which we use to support our reading and writing curriculum, and project-based learning. Instead, we can create a researcher's workshop model, which includes the steps of our design thinking process, and really leads to a high level of active engagement in all of our students. So students are provided with some voice and choice in this model, where they use differentiated avenues to synthesize and present their thinking and learning. They're doing this while learning how to access and utilize our digital literacy materials and databases, and the example in this lesson is our PebbleGo database. So this process involves three steps, and it's students choosing their own topics based on wonderings or on the content area being studied, and then completing some independent or guided research, demonstrating their thinking and learning throughout this process, and conferencing and receiving or giving feedback, which can be teacher and/or peer-directed. So these are some student work examples from grades two to four that support our social studies curriculum. So in using our researcher's workshop, students were demonstrating differentiated modes of research, planning, application, and different presentation styles for topics under the US government and US symbols units. Whether it be graphic organizers, flow charts, text, video, or audio presentations, all of our students on the screen had an entry point to this work, and then were able to have independent time to personalize their own learning. We continued this work with our study of coding, some of our growth mindset work, and our digital citizenship lessons as well. After reviewing the work of their classmates and providing and receiving feedback, students made their own plans for their next steps, and their work really evolved throughout the progression of each session. Students maintained a high level of engagement and ownership as they revisited, revised, and created their own paths for learning. The third part of this process led to some of our virtual collaboration, which strongly supports the needs, the social emotional needs of all of our learners. While providing students with some prompts and some sentence stems, they really took off with giving and receiving peer feedback underneath our digital citizenship tip, which was remember to keep your comments kind, respectful, and appropriate, and our students really did rise to the occasion here. This led to students asking for separate breakout rooms to collaborate on ideas and projects for future sessions, and students were asking to use their free time to meet virtually and continue this work together. These opportunities really serve as a great tool for students to stay connected, and also targets our digital citizenship curriculum, and provides opportunities for our students to build emotionally intelligent peer connections. To follow up on some of this work, I provided students with some choice boards, and they've served as a great way to offer an extension to this learning, research, and inquiry work. It offers differentiated options to access some digital resources and media curriculum, and for students to continue their learning and exploration beyond our inquiry sessions together. So this new way of delivering instruction really shifted my thinking about how, as teachers, how we can store materials and collect student work digitally. It's a great way to norm student work and plan for our next steps, as we ask ourselves how we can embed this work and these sets of skills across all content areas and areas of curriculum. It's also a great way to provide exemplars and to help activate prior knowledge and learning for students during lessons. These collections can serve as a virtual gallery walk for both students and teachers. So it's really exciting to think about where this work will take us post-pandemic, and how we can continue to leverage all of these tools in this ever-changing transformational world.
Thank you so much, Andrea, and to all of our presenters for providing from some perspective of transformational practices from each of the different levels in the district. At this point now, we can actually stop sharing the slides, and hopefully we can bring each of the presenters up on the screen, and if we bring this to a close, is have each of our presenters go through a quick 30-second reflection or takeaway about something that they learned, and something that they realized during this time. We'll start with Alex, and we'll go in the order that we went in during the presentation.
Thanks, Justin. One thing I realized from this end-of-unit project is that learning and collaboration for the students can really thrive in the hybrid model. I was blown away with the excitement and enthusiasm that students had as they solved this real-world problem, and even though they were in different locations, again, just their ability to collaborate and show that they could come together and be a strong team.
One of the things that I learned was that, one of my favorite parts of teaching is just the buzz and excitement of students, and I knew that from the beginning, I didn't want to lose it, so I just had to be more creative in order to sustain that. And also, it's a beautiful thing to see full involvement, and the idea that students can find a way where they feel most confident, so either in the chat, or in the whole room, or in a breakout room, because it really highlights their personalities and their personal skills.
I had two major takeaways so far. One is that our students are able to adapt to like any technology that we use. All the platforms that I've used, students like use it, and then they run with it, and now I'm learning things that like I could do on Desmos that I know because of my students, and things that I know you could do in Geogebra, so they are ready to like implement all these technologies. The second takeaway is that anytime I gave them a project, the quality of their work at the end really surpassed my expectation. Like, every single project that I gave them this year, what they do like blows my mind.
Yes, I have to agree. Students are so ready for this work and really motivated by it. And as I realized that we don't have to choose between project-based learning and a reading and writing workshop, the opportunities for delivering engaging instruction have really just become endless. By incorporating more voice and choice and allowing for this inquiry-based learning, we're truly empowering our students to take ownership of their own learning, and giving them the ability to transfer and apply these skills to all areas of their day.
Thank you. We hope that this gives you insight into the innovation and adaptation that's taking place in the classroom, and do you have any questions for any of our participants? Well, first of all, I would like to say a great big thank you to both of your professional development teams, Mary Dubain and Justin Olive, thank you so much for this wonderful presentation, and to the presenters for taking the time to share all of your wonderful initiatives with us. And indeed, I would just like to thank all of the faculty for this tremendous adaptation to such unexpected challenges, and we couldn't be more proud of our teachers and our administrators for truly an unprecedented effort for pivoting out of moments' notice in a situation that no one prepared for, and you did it without missing a beat. And you are to be commended, and I don't think that we can ever thank you enough for all that you've done. And I'm just so impressed that we're not really looking at going back to normal, we're looking at moving towards a new future, and that we've taken such a difficult moment in our history, and that we've learned so much, so much that, you know, although we pride ourselves in innovation, but there's nothing like hardship to make, you know, it's the mother of invention, right? And you've taken full advantage of that, and I'm very impressed, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what teaching and learning will look like in the future. I don't really have any questions right now, I'll bring it up to the board to ask questions.
I say ditto to everything that Vicki just said, and thank you, I'm so amazed by this. I have two young ones at home, so I get to see the... I have two young ones at home, so I get to see the other side as well, and seeing how engaged my kids can be in a classroom that's on the screen is amazing. So I just want to repeat that it's amazing what you guys have been able to accomplish in such an unusual environment. But the question I have, and this is really for anybody, is through this transformational process, is there anything from the old world, so to speak, that you're just ready to throw out the window now, that you've discovered some of these new tools, and how engaged the kids can be?
So the question is, is there anything from the quote-unquote "old world" of teaching that we're ready to throw out the window and give up on? And so I know that, you know, there's probably lots of different ideas there. Would anyone like to start off thinking of anything that we can sort of get rid of?
Sure. I mean, I would actually argue that I don't think there's necessarily anything to get rid of, more so there would be something to do adapt, right? So like the electronic fishbowl, now I have to figure out how to use a chat while in a classroom with everybody there, right? So it's things like that, you know, that sort of added to the lesson and added to the moment that I don't want to lose. So I would have to then adapt the in-classroom style to accommodate for that.
If I can add, I completely agree with Elizabeth. I think it's more of adapting the things that we did before. For example, I'm thinking of a math worksheet. Instead of doing a worksheet, have it on decimals, and do an exploration, and have students discover and collaborate. So I think it's more about adapting many of the things that we were already doing in the classroom.
I had to it too. Holly, I think finding the real answer to that question is really trying it out and experimenting in the classroom, because it's not that we're throwing out some of the traditional practices, it's that we're finding ways that they can coexist with the ones that we're currently in, in the hybrid environment. And that's going to be the next challenge, is really finding how we can best blend the two approaches.
And if I could add, something that's like an interesting observation that I had was that particularly in upper Elkhurst building here at Coors, really, you know, teachers got so used to all the whiteboards and all the markers, and like having the kids go into breakout rooms. And it was like, like at first, it was like, what do we do? We got so used to that new paradigm, but I think it actually kind of got a lot of teachers ready for the shift. And so, you know, I think whether it's the new STEAM center that opened and really got people thinking differently, the new flexible space in lots of different classrooms, I think really sort of helped pave the way for people's adaptation to this current environment. And so I think we're just going to keep building on it.
I look forward to seeing what comes next.
Yeah, I mean, this is amazing, and I think that what's so neat is that organically, this has also prepared our students for what they will experience in real life in the workplace. And, you know, we often talk about how do we give our kids real-life experience? Well, the idea of working and collaborating with people who are not in geographic proximity to you is so common today in terms of the real-life work experience. And, you know, we're seeing it even just with the vaccine development, and people working in laboratories across the world collaborating. So I think that it's, even if it's not the main focus, that's this great lesson that the kids are getting through this hybrid environment, is how do you collaborate with somebody who's not necessarily sitting right next to you, and the person who is sitting right next to you, and how do you do those two things simultaneously? And so I think that that's sort of a great, you know, secondary piece of all this beyond, obviously, the content, is just learning how to work like this, because I think we're all going to be going forward. Now that we see that it can be done, I think there's going to be a lot more of it. So thank you, this was really cool to see.
The only thing I would say is, you know, we hear every meeting from Adam, Christine, the other administrators, how we're moving forward with teaching and learning within the district. This is a perfect illustration of what you're doing, how you're the outside of Zoom box, or what we call that, or the fishbowl, and creating really enhanced learning methods, enhanced learning environment, not just, you know, for math, teacher, putting two plus two on the board, and what's the equal, but looking at how do you make learning remotely, how do you engage students that way? It just, it's wonderful, so thank you.
I am just really in awe, and this was such a wonderful presentation, because we've come to see this at work in so many different disciplines and grade levels, and, you know, and it's true what Warren said, that we hear about what's going on and what the transformations that all the teachers have made, but seeing this kind of specificity, and really seeing it at work really gives us a window that we don't get to see that often, so it is very much appreciated. And I also liked something that Lando said about the kids jumping in and showing him new things. And something I remember at the very beginning of this year, when we have a meeting for new faculty members, and we were still distant and out in the courtyard here, and a lot of them were saying, even at the start of the year, how so many of the students were jumping in and helping them with the technology and this transformation. And it shows how eager they are, how, that's another aspect of the learning between the teacher and the student. And I just love, first of all, I know what difficulty it is, but I love how you've all transitioned, and that you will take the best practices forward, and continue to incorporate it when, hopefully soon, we can all be together in person. So really, just thank you for taking the time to show us a window into your everyday world, and how you're really keeping the educational quality so high for these students, and keeping them so engaged during a very challenging time. So thank you, this was really wonderful.
So on behalf of the central office in the district, I want to thank you all for being with us tonight, for sharing your learning that's happening in your classrooms. Really appreciate all that you're doing to support our kids through the pandemic, both socially and academically, and it shows. And so thank you, I want to let everyone go, because tomorrow is a new day. And we appreciate you being with us today, this was really amazing, so thank you. And thank you, Mary and Justin, for organizing it for the district. Thank you all, thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And this went seamlessly technologically tonight, so way to go, everybody.
Great. So we're going to transition to our next presentation. So Phillip, if you could come up and join us on the stage, that would be great. Good night. Just to give David a second. To move us into our presentation this evening on our district's approach to antiracism and social justice education. As you'll remember from our meeting in September, we earmarked tonight as the midway point where we will be updating the Board of Education in our progress on some targets we set for ourselves at the beginning of this academic school year. So let me just give David a second. And I just want to take this opportunity, of course, we all know Phillip by now, but I just want to welcome you to your first time at the board table. We're so happy to have you here at our board meeting.
Thank you, thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here in person with you and actually see you, like all of you.
Tony would be doing a longer introduction with a slide in a moment of all that Phillip has accomplished so far, and in short time here, so we're really happy to have you a part of this evening. Okay, so as you know, we've talked about since June that there is a gap between how what we espouse our district to value and where we currently are. And we are committed and have been committed to acting with purpose, and accelerating our response, and showing progress, and closing that gap between what we feel is the district that we want our students to be a part of, where they feel valued and accepted for who they are, and what we heard are some of our students are experiencing as they transition from grade to grade in this district as students here, particularly our BIPOC students. And so we developed a framework that we will be operating in as we move forward with our work. And so we're going to show you some slides tonight, and describe to you some of the ways that we have taken some action to start to address and close that gap within the framework of our approach. Okay, so I just want to remind the board that we have specific target areas that we outlined in the community, so we're going to go through each of them right now for this presentation. All right, so the first is the Community Advisory Committee. So the CARES committee is a board-led group that's made up of stakeholders in our community, including students that Tony and I are a part of. And so part of what our goal was for, as we met over the course of the first semester, was to identify what we would be working on collectively as a group. And so Holly and Vicki are a part of that, on behalf of the Board of Education. And at our last meeting, after we finished our small analysis, and Phillip shared with us data from our kid survey, which he will be sharing with the committee tonight, the CARES committee declared what our focus areas would be as we move forward. So our three areas are developing a shared understanding in common language around our work, focused and intentional professional learning, and then developing an equitable culture and climate for our BIPOC students. So we'll be working on that as we move forward, and we'll be sharing our updates with the Board of Education for our community reports. We also, as you know, a part of our goal during the first half of the year was to hire our Director of Equity Inclusion and Wellness, and we're able to do that, we're so pleased to have Phillip here. And Tony's going to introduce him to the community officially, and share some of the accomplishments and work that Phillip has done so far. And then Phillip will walk us through part of the survey that we committed to administering to our students during the first half of the year.
Thank you, Christine. So this is Mr. Phillip Marcus, I'm excited to be sitting with him here on stage. He joined us at the end of November, so he's just wrapping up the second month here in the district with us. And I want to thank Ellen for partnering with me on the search to hire Phillip. We started that after the board approved the position in August, and we were so happy with the candidate pool that we had, but even happier that we were able to hire Phillip. So in his short time here, Phillip has really centered a lot of his work on getting to know the organization through the people in the community and in the organization, with entry interviews with everyone from the board, to administrators, to teachers, and to students. And the student conversations have been through, you know, sort of focus groups around specific issues, but also have been critically enlightening, and I'm sure Phillip will fill us in a little bit about the journey and the experience that our kids have. That's been really important. Phillip has also been co-facilitating our admin and PD team book club discussion on the book Not Light the Fire. The author was with us today. He's doing that work with Jen Thompson, one of our staff developers. He's also taken on the role of co-facilitating the Equity Fellowship with me, which has been great, it's been wonderful to have a partner and a thought partner in the work, and pushing the work forward in a really meaningful way. Excited about that, I want to share an update on the fellowship in a little bit as well. He's also been working with us, developed like a professional learning plan. We've talked a lot about identifying a scope and sequence to really ground this work, have some clarity around the trajectory in this work that we're going to engage in, as it relates to anti-social justice and antiracism. And he's been an amazing resource. In two months, been pulled in a bunch of different directions to support teachers, administrators, and colleagues. And so, without further ado, I want to turn it over to Phillip, as he's going to talk to us a little bit about a recent survey that we engaged our students in grade six through 12. So welcome.
Thank you, Tony, and thank you to the board for inviting me here tonight. I'm really looking forward to sharing some of what I've learned about the district so far through the survey. And one thing I did want to comment on was that I did have the chance to connect with students to unpack the events of January 6th. And one thing I can say is that the students are really exceptional, really inquisitive, and we had really great focused discussion around race and really how to process it. And I think one thing that I walked away from the session with, and one thing that they noted, was that these are conversations that they hope to continue moving forward, because it was really important for them, by giving them a lens to really process race in America and racism largely. So as Tony mentioned, the district administered a six-through-12 survey through the Panorama Education System. So something that we were looking for was to evaluate the state, the current state of equity and inclusion in the district. So we sent the survey out to about 2,000 students, 2,032 students, and I think about 1,800 students took the survey. So we had a 98% response rate, which was really good. So we're really sure that the data that we got from that is pretty accurate, and really speaks to how students are experiencing the district and their school communities. All right, so the survey really assessed three focus areas. The first is diversity and inclusion, the second, cultural awareness and action, and the third, sense of belonging. For the purposes of the unpacking tonight, we wanted to focus on, you know, an area that really could be strengthened. So looking specifically at a sense of belonging, which was at 49%, we wanted to just take a deep dive into that specific category, so that we were able to really get a sense of what were the questions that students were responding to, how did that data differ by race and ethnicity, by gender, or by language experience? Okay, so on the left side of the screen are our top three categories, and those gray boxes show the average. So for cultural awareness and action, the district average of positive response rates was 57%. Diversity and inclusion, 64%, and sense of belonging, 49%. So below that is the breakdown based on race and ethnicity. In the orange shows negative responses or negative deviations from that average. So what we'll notice with the arrows, students who identified as Asian, minus seven from that 49%, Black African-American students, minus 13, Hispanic or Latino, negative four, and then biracial students, negative 10. So if we're looking at the white category, plus three. So I think that there's a clear difference in the way that students of different races and ethnicities are experiencing the district. And on the right side of the screen, we have the difference by language. So students who reported speaking Chinese at home, a very different experience negatively, Russian, negative four, but English, positive two. So these results were consistent across all of the schools. White students tended to experience a positive response rate compared to students who identified as either racial minorities or spoke languages other than English. Okay, so as we look further at the data, what we'll notice is that the six-through-12 responses tended to trend more negatively as students went towards 12th grade. So sixth grade in terms of sense of belonging was our highest, at 57%, which means that really, in middle school, that's when students are feeling the most connected, and then as we go towards the high school, that's our lowest. So if we're looking at 12th grade, we have 43%. So these two images show the same data. I think the right is really telling at how students are starting to feel that lack of connection to their school communities. And just to give you a sense of what were the questions within that category that students responded to, the two lowest I indicated with the arrows, how connected do you feel to the adults at your school, 32%? And how much do you matter to others at the school, 42%? Now, today, Tony and I had a meeting with the building principals and shared with them their individual building data. So as we looked at the building data, pretty much those two questions were the ones where we saw the greatest gap.
Thank you, Phillip. So now I want to transition into our strategic plan. So as the board is aware, and the community, we had a strategic planning committee meet about two years ago, and with community feedbacks that are target areas for the district that we would be working on, and that we build our budget around as we plan forward into the next school year. So what we thought was important was that the strategic planning committee reconvened, we processed the, where we, the work that we have done over the summer and in the fall semester, and that we, that Phillip shared the data that we collected from our students to determine if we needed to reprioritize our strategic plan to reflect the work that we're doing around equity and social justice and inclusion. So the strategic planning committee met last week, and we decided that we would and we decided that we would set this as a priority of the district under one of our six subheadings of the work that we will collectively engage in as a district moving forward. And you'll see that our sixth addendum is reflective of creating and cultivating an equitable, affirming, and culturally responsible learning environment for our students here in the district. At this point, I'd like Tony to provide an update on our RFP process. As the Board is aware and the community who have been participating in our process in how we are supporting our faculty moving forward, that in order for us to leverage professional development at the level that we believe we need to, based on the rules that govern our financial process, we need to have interested parties who'd like to work with the district provide proposals for us. So Tony has led that process, so I did want him to provide an update for you tonight on where we are with it.
Sure. Thank you, Christine. So this is, these are the components of an RFP review. We talked about that during our meeting a few weeks ago in December, what we look for in a proposal. So since our meeting in December, what we did was we launched the RFP. We took feedback from the CARES Committee. We received feedback from our participants in the CARES Committee. We received feedback from BIPOC faculty and students to help enhance and revise the RFP before it was published December 17th. It went out and had a deadline of February 19th. We only received two proposals, and neither of them really met our needs based on what we were expecting and looking for in terms of professional development. And one had quite an absorbing cost associated with it as well, suggesting $2 million for three years of professional learning, which was far more than we were planning on potentially spending for this aspect of the work. So I believe we're going to be in a place where we will ask to recast the RFP and look for new proposals, and hopefully do that in early February so that we can get some proposals in by March and then hopefully have some candidates for you to meet and consider for partnership moving forward.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, and so I'd like Adam to provide an update on the professional learning and curriculum work that's been taking place over the fall. And I'm actually going to give you the flipper.
Coaching, you had to do it. I've never done it myself. So some of these experiences we've shared as part of our superintendent updates through previous meetings, but we did want to just package them all together. These are updates since our last overall presentation on equity. So we're going to go through some professional learning and curriculum initiatives that we have going. And some of these, many of these will look familiar to you. The first one is we had a November 3rd Superintendent Conference Day. We had Dr. Ju come virtually to do a keynote for our faculty. And you can see some of the key ideas there. I know many of the Board members participated in that, so you're able to see Dr. Ju. So we continue to use that, we bought, purchased a copy for all of our faculty members and then used it in faculty meetings and book clubs throughout the district. So we continue to lean on that language and use it as a foundation with which we talk about race through the district. So it was a nice unifying experience for the entire district. And it's given us some, some language and some really nice analogies to think about race in our schools and be able to talk about it, engage in conversations. Matthew Kay was here today. He wrote the book Not Light But Fire. And when I say here, he was here virtually for us. We had a 3:30 keynote for our faculty and then a 5:30 kind of administrative book talk. And I appreciate the Board participated in that, as did our administrative team. Not Light But Fire is a book that's all about how faculty lead meaningful race conversations in the classroom. So Matthew Kay is an educator, a full-time teacher working down in Philadelphia. So he comes with that kind of background, experience, and credibility with our faculty. And we continue to go through that book and kind of glean information. It's got some fantastic information about things that he refers to as pop-up conversations, which was particularly helpful as we navigated the events of Washington, DC. So those were pop-up events that teachers could, with some support background from this book, you know, engage students in those conversations and take advantage of those learning experiences. In addition, Philip and Jennifer Thompson, Jennifer Thompson is our professional developer who focuses mainly on literacy, are running a fantastic book club for us with the administrative team and the professional development team. We've been able to carve out about an hour every couple of weeks. And Philip and Jennifer have been fantastic at finding other supplemental resources. We've been watching some YouTube videos that they found that were really powerful conversation starters as well as leaning on the book as part of a book talk. So that's some of our leadership professional learning that we're doing. And then obviously, we can turn key and support that, those conversations in our, throughout our schools. So thank you, Philip and Jennifer, for facilitating that. So I think I went, I think I went too far here. Let's see if I can go back. So we continue our, have a relationship with Dr. Brenda and Dr. Franklin Campbell Jones. They were also here on November 3rd, and they worked with our counseling department, all of our counselors and clinicians K-12. They worked on that cultural proficiency continuum. We did that work over the summer with the Board of Education as a leadership team. So we continue to kind of grow that language and proficiency. And they also did some specific work at the request of our English department to start to dig deeply into how to use literature to engage in conversations about race in our classrooms. So they ran several sessions for us, and they continue to be just a favorite of our faculty. And every time you seem to have them in the district, there's other groups and other departments that ask us if they can access them at a future, you know, Superintendent Conference Day or whatnot. So we'll continue our relationship with them. We really appreciate their work. Our Facing History Learning Team, I know I've mentioned this to the Board in the past. We have used the resources from Facing History and the professional developers. It's been a really good fit for us, and we're just wrapping up a 30-hour learning team from Facing History. And there's been some suggestions that we should kind of spin off some other professional development that may be provided by Facing History. So this was mainly geared towards our middle school and high school social studies curriculum. So Facing History has been another really, really just good and important teammate and ally for us as a school district. And then Tony's going to talk a little bit about the Chat Equity Fellowship.
Yeah, thank you. So our fellowship launch in September, as you know, postponed from the spring, where we had initially hoped to launch. And it's been a really, really incredibly inspiring start to the experience with 25 teachers who are participating. We have a group of six teachers who are leading a lot of the work and planning a lot of the work. And it's wonderful to know that we've had an opportunity to center and empower some of our BIPOC teachers to lead this work and to inform the work moving forward. And Philip has seamlessly stepped in and joined us for the work here. So what we've done is we've broken up the fellowship, which is a two-year commitment into smaller chunks of like three or four sessions. And we developed specific learning arcs around those three or four sessions to focus on a specific area that we want to develop. So so far, we've focused on relationship building, creating these emotionally safe spaces because we want people to engage. We want to create both safe and brave spaces. We've established norms for ourselves that we anchor every session around, and we ask people to select a norm to be thinking about. And we are trying to model and practice the surfacing and identifying of problematic words, actions, beliefs that we feel are rooted in, you know, white supremacy and systemic racism and push that conversation. So I'm really proud to share that our teachers have leaned in. It's been uncomfortable times. It's been powerful at times. But we are really excited about the direction of the fellowship.
Thank you, Tony. So our friends at CSF helped make our windows and ears libraries possible. These were our, an initiative for kindergarten through fourth grade and with an eye towards diversifying the authors and the characters in our elementary school libraries. We started this about a year ago, and now I'm happy to report that they are all in place and being used. And Philip and Jamie Edelman and Jen Thompson are doing quite a bit of work around having our teachers really unlock the power of these beautiful books. So they are all, they're levels by, you know, grade level. The kindergarten, first grade library was different than the third and fourth library. But they turned out to be a really nice resource for a variety of reasons. One of, one of them was with, in the events of Washington, DC, we actually had some books that were good conversation starters for us to be able to engage students in some conversations. So it's nice that Philip and his expertise on board, he's really helping us unlock those, those books and induce some professional development with our teachers around having those conversations with our students. And thank you to the CSF for that. It was a significant grant, and I really appreciate their contribution to help us make that possible. I also, I wanted to highlight just a few grade levels and different kind of lessons that were done across the district or units that were done across the district. And so we picked a few out. One of them was fifth grade, a whole class novel that they started the year with called Save Me A Seed. And this book was really about two characters, our two boys, one of, one of which lived and grew up in a town, a small town, for his whole life. But his friends moved out of town, and then a new friend moved to town that, from another country that he thought he really didn't have anything in common. And it turns out, they both start, they're both bullied by the same person. And so they have this kind of, they become allies in that, and then they start to get to know each other much better. And so it's a, it's a really nice book, and we actually have one of our teachers who's going to just give us a little summary.
Good morning. This is Max Tordell Allen, Seven Bridges English and Social Studies teacher, fifth grade. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the work we've been doing with anti-racism and own voice authors. And I wanted to talk a little bit specifically about how we chose the book Save Me A Seed. The fifth grade English teachers met over the summer, and we really met with a purpose to bring a book to the beginning of fifth grade, which would tie together some of the themes we wanted to work with, with anti-racism, own voice authors, as we did a literature review of our classrooms and the books that we use, and found that we needed to add more authentic voices from different cultures and ethnicities. And we chose Save Me A Seed by Sarah Weeks and Gita Vahar Darajan. And part of why we chose this book was actually having to do with names. And one of the things about names with being such a great place to start is the book itself is about the idea that names are so personal and important to people and that sometimes people don't bother to learn each other's names. And we don't do that because they can be difficult to pronounce for us, and we don't put the work in to actually doing that. So one of the tie-ins we did for some anti-racist work was around names and identity.
Thank Max for recording that short video for us. So that was one of the fifth grade experiences that all of our fifth grade students read, as a whole class novel. I also wanted to share a book that we added in eighth grade, which is actually a memoir. It's a refugee story of the author who just experienced unspeakable events as a refugee. And for a vast majority of our students, obviously, this is a window to a world that they just don't know much about. And so it gave our eighth grade teachers the opportunity to engage students in a variety of conversations about race and other kind of coming-of-age, mature topics. We do this as a whole class novel in eighth grade because it is, it does touch on things that are challenging for students in eighth grade. And so this was a book that we just added to the, to our kind of canon in eighth grade. And I just wanted to share just a few of the student projects that were kind of grown out of reading that book. Here's a student project on racism in sports. We have another one on apartheid. There's a third on racial prejudice and ballet. So one of the culminating parts of that, reading that story, was for students to start to create some, some of their own kind of infographics and artwork around racism. And in ninth grade, all of our ninth graders this year are in the process of reading Stamped. And we have Lauren Nero is going to talk. She's a ninth grade English teacher. She recorded a little clip, and she's going to give us a little bit of a summary of how she prepared for Stamped.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lauren Nero, and I am an English teacher here at Horace Greeley High School. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit today about some of the pre-work we did before my ninth graders got into this fantastic book, Stamped, that we will be reading as an entire ninth grade team. This is some of the most important work we're going to do this year. So I wanted to make sure that the kids were really set up to have meaningful conversations, to be able to get through uncomfortable and challenging conversations, and to feel like they were part of a community that supported the idea of growth when thinking about the idea of racism and systemic racism in America. So something that I personally did, I had created a lesson where I had my students collaborate in some small groups on a Jamboard to start generating some norms and expectations for how these conversations could go and to also create some sentence stems. So if people were feeling like they were getting stuck while they were talking with each other, that they can kind of move the conversation forward or potentially kind of take a minute to really look at some of the difficult topics that are coming up. The hard part here was we had created norms and expectations at the beginning of the year when we were having a few more people coming into the building, you know. And then I have many of my students virtual, so I needed to make sure that we really reestablished the norms on Zoom for these types of conversations. They're hard enough to have in person, but with that added layer, it's a little bit more difficult even. So my students generated everything you see here, which should come as no surprise because they are amazing kids. So we have the norms and expectations that were created by them, down to the basic Zoom rules themselves, the participation, the conversation, and then ultimately creating these brave spaces where kids can really feel like they can ask the questions that they need to, talk about their feelings and thoughts related to the idea of race and racism in America, and feel like they are in a space that those questions and thoughts are going to be respected.
Thank Mrs. Nero for that. Start to pull it right through. The first chapter of Matthew Kay's book is all about kind of establishing those norms, building relationships with students, and getting ready to have those conversations with your class. So I appreciate the ninth grade teachers' work and making sure that they're building that safe space in their classroom to be able to engage in those important conversations. And Stamped is the book that they chose to do that. I just wanted to shift from ELA over to social studies for a couple of minutes. We continue to work on our social studies curriculum. One of the things that we heard is that we've got to reconsider whose history we're telling and through what voice. And so at the middle school level, we're doing a lot of work around the vocabulary that we use and defining that vocabulary, working with our faculty to make sure we have good, consistent definitions across the middle school. In seventh grade, they're doing some work in the curriculum around understanding the origins of race-based enslavement. In eighth grade, they have built civil rights memorials as part of a project, and models or miniatures of civil rights memorials that they actually came up with. They weren't reproductions. They were things that they thought should be more memorialized as events, for example. So those are some of our middle school projects that we have as examples. And then you can also see in high school, the work continues for this group of students. We're going to have to rethink this just a little bit, but for this group of students, because our current 11th graders didn't have that stamped experience. We're also, we have stamped being read in 11th grade as well. Obviously, when the current ninth graders move up, we're going to have to make some adjustments there. And then you can see also some original sources that we're using in AP History that are new. And I believe the Board approved a brand for the Color of Law that was written by a teacher that we're now using in AP Government as part of student book clubs. So they can see some of the work there and really in the social studies curriculum. And the last thing for the curriculum and instruction update is we try to, to work very hard and strategically around using the insurrection and inauguration of events that could be springboards into, you know, conversations around not only democracy, but also race, racism, white supremacy, et cetera. And so we provided quite a bit of opportunities for teachers to engage in some professional development around lesson planning, providing resources, kind of best practices and tips to engage in that. And on the right there, you can see the kind of, the picture that's there. You can see that Amanda, now famous Amanda Gorman poem, "The Hill We Climb." I don't think she realized that she was writing a lesson plan for probably hundreds of thousands of teachers across the, rewriting the lesson plan for hundreds of thousands of teachers across the country. So it was a powerful experience, and we made sure that all of our students saw that and had the opportunity to unpack that poem. So that's a, that's a window into what we're working on for our curriculum and professional development. And I think Tony's going to take over with affinity groups.
Sure. Thank you, Adam. So just to point out, the memoir, How Dare This Sunrise, is about a young girl from the Democratic Republic of Congo, just to, as a point of reference. So the affinity group work is something that we're really excited about. One of the things that we talked about in our process for recruiting and hiring BIPOC educators, more important than recruiting and hiring, were the structures that we had in place here to retain our teachers of color because the research is clear about the turnover rates that we see, especially in predominantly white communities. So one of the structures that we put in place this year was a BIPOC faculty affinity group. And that's being facilitated by a few of our teachers, and it's a learning team. So it's through our curriculum office, and the teachers meet for 15 hours for a need service credit. And they have been meeting since early October. And their focus has been anchored in two texts. They've been using "I Am Still Here: Black Dignity in a World Made for Whiteness" by Austin Channing Brown. So that's a book that they've been using. And they've also been using an offshoot of Michelle Obama's Belonging. It's a journal that has certain prompts. So they've been doing a lot of reflection to engage in conversation. I just want to thank you. I just want to thank the teachers who are facilitating our BIPOC affinity group. And I also wanted to share a couple of points of feedback that the teachers who participated, shared based on experience. They, so some of our teachers who were in the affinity group, they felt great about having a safe space to share without feeling like their values or thinking were not the norm. The affinity group brought calm, friendship and joy to their work. The affinity group is a reason I would not want to leave Chapewa. That was like one of the comments in the feedback that really stood out. And it's great to have a space to ensure that my colleagues are supported and I can support them as well. So that's, that's ongoing. Part two of the affinity circle is going to launch in a few weeks and that'll take us to the end of the year. We're thinking about how we can structure it for next year so that people who are in the group who's participating now can continue at a different level and then we can onboard new staff in the fall as well. And so our mentoring program, which we talked about earlier this year, so if you can go to the next slide. So we developed some, some thinking around a potential mentoring program. We've been discussing it for the last several months, thinking about what it might look like to best with any of our students. And so where we're sitting right now is we're looking at potentially starting with staff mentors. So people within the organization who can mentor students, specifically BIPOC students, we're looking for that mentorship. We are also thinking about how we can link to our BIPOC alumni and treat it maybe as networking sessions, if you will, for our students, especially our juniors and seniors, so that they can connect with students who have been through the Greeley experience and are now performing in some, you know, professional capacity that they want to know more about. So we're still in the development phase there around what this is going to look like. But we had a planning meeting this week, Philip and I met with Tanu Gaye as we are looking to partner with the PSU for, for some of this and we refine some of our thinking and what it'll look like moving forward. So we'll have an update later on.
Thank you, Tony. So I just wanted to provide also a quick policy update. So for those of you who haven't been part of our Board of Education meetings, a Board of Education this year, the Policy Committee recommended a title, Senate Civil Rights Act for our Board of Education's consideration, which was adopted at the December 8, 2020 meeting. And I also know that the Board of Education was heavily involved in being part of the Code of Conduct process and creating a system where the district would report to the community incidents that were considered or that involved hate speech, bias and discrimination. And at the start of the year, we indicated when those reports would be provided at a public meeting. So I wanted to share tonight that we did our first update, our quarterly report in November, where I shared with the community the incidents by level and which incidents generated a communication to the, to the building at which the incident occurred based on the parameters outlined in our Code of Conduct. And our next community update for quarter two will be at the February meeting, which was outlined at the start of the school year. And at the November meeting where I presented this information originally, the Board of Education asked me to provide more details, which I did at the December meeting. So this is the format that we agreed upon moving forward. And so I just wanted to conclude by sharing with the Board of Education and with the community that we plan to update the, the board on our progress in terms of our work that we'll be engaged in the second half of the school year at the June meeting as a part of our overall presentation regarding our progress on the strategic plan now that this has been identified as one of our target areas for improvement in the district. So this is our, this is our presentation for the evening. We would welcome your comments or your suggestions. We also plan on sharing this out with the larger community in the same format we did in January. I would provide a, a cover, a cover letter with the presentation attached and then we will present the video of our presentation tonight to the community review. So, thank you. I just want to start off by thanking you again for making this a real priority. You've really dug in deep and are doing work that will take, will take time and it's, a lot of the work is just sort of quiet internal and relationship work. So it, it may be hard to see from the outside, but, but your presentation gives a lot of clarity to it and I really appreciate that. I just have some detailed questions for now. For instance, on the RFP, do we need to rewrite it? Is there, have you reassessed what, how we presented the RFP and whether kind of a rewrite might be in order?
So based on the assessment of how the first go went, I don't know that it's so much about a rewrite as much as it is about tapping into certain networks and groups to bring the RFP to their attention. That process was new to me, to be totally transparent. I had never facilitated or developed an RFP. And so the sharing of the RFP and how it gets to groups that may be doing that work is a whole other layer. And it was a step that I didn't push far enough. And so it is something that will definitely be a focal point moving forward. So we, Philip and I have already started talking about what groups can we identify to share the RFP with so they may submit a proposal.
I'd also like to add, I think Tony is being a little hard on himself. There's not a lot of school districts that are engaged in work like this at this level. So I don't recall us being able to pull from a lot of RFPs that were out there already around this work. So are being more active in soliciting potential professional developers, probably at the collegiate level, would be a place that I think we'll have to gear our efforts towards. But I believe that's because we are kind of in a position that not a lot of other places are in terms of being ready to do this work in this way at this level. Also, I appreciated that the board was able to be part of the administrative retreat with Michael Kaye. I thought that was a really great presentation and good window into what the faculty and administration is thinking about and how you work on these issues. One thing that he said that struck me was, can't remember exactly how he put it, but to have proper supports for your teachers as they go out and do this work, sort of like have their back. And it made me wonder about the role of the board in that, whether we have enough there to, to be following that advice. I know that we have, we have two resolutions from the board that we put together in fairly short order after we understood the gravity of the urgency of the work we have to do. But I'm wondering whether we need some further policies. And I know that we've discussed reviewing the board events, strategic question. There's that out there as well and I think we should, should get a move on. But, but policy wise, I just wonder if there's more that we can do to provide the proper support for our faculty to move, move forward in work that, you know, they've never done before. And that, and that most faculty in secondary education has not done. I agree. I think that's an important consideration for the Policy Committee as we move forward. I'd also love to research in our professional morning this afternoon. Our, our author referenced that districts have had one like that. So I'd like to research that more to understand how that came about and where that, where that sits within the context of their organization. And perhaps that's something we can also discuss with the CARES Committee in this meeting. Would you, do you have any other, any questions?
I just have a big wow, that's a lot. And I know we've already talked about all of the transformation going on in the teaching. So I just, more kudos to all of you for being able to make this a priority as well and make such, such progress and traction. I know we still have a long journey ahead of us, but the, the progress that's been made is evident in, in the things the teachers had to say and the programs and the books and the commitment to these fellowships and writing groups. I just think all around, another kudos is, is going to there.
Thank you. This is creating a really comprehensive update. So I appreciate all the information and I was very impressed by the fact that there are so many levels of support for the teachers and administrators because I think it, you know, very important to not just say this is the priority, so do it, but here are resources and people and support for going out and doing it because doing it is very important and having these conversations is very important. But also the teachers feeling like there are people they can ask and resources they can tack when there are questions. Because it's challenging, especially when you have something like the insurrection at the Capitol, nobody's had to do that before. And, and so to know that as this anti-racism work is being done, the, the support structure is being put into place as well, I think is really, really important and I really appreciate that.
I'd also like to share the student data is really critical in driving how we're going to shape our work moving forward, which is why the CARES Committee indicated that that would be one of their priority areas, areas to focus on. I mean, obviously very concerned about how kids are feeling as being a part of our school community and the difference in how our BIPOC students are feeling compared to our white students. So that will be the focus. Much of our work moving forward and we'll see some clear updates on how we began to address them and address in our approach and how to continue to address how students feel about being part of our school community.
Well, what was, what was so clear to me and I know it is clear to the community is, is the level of commitment to this work. And it's, it's hard work and it's challenging on so many levels. Timing, the, the situation we all find ourselves in right now, pandemic, and there are layers upon layers of things that need to be transformed and changed and moved forward right now. But it's very clear to all of us, your heartfelt commitment to this work and, and we really, we welcome Philip and this has been, you know, wonderful. We got a little bit of a sneak preview, some of us that were at the strategic planning meeting. But I think that this survey was critical and I'm very thankful that it was done. I also think the level of participation was, was wonderful so that I feel like the, the numbers really do speak to how the community is feeling. And our BIPOC community made their voices heard and, and we need to take note of that and, and move forward with that information. I really appreciate how much everyone is committed to making sure that those numbers turn around for the non-white families in this community. And I really thank you for doing this work and thank you for allowing us to be a part of it and for presenting this. This is a lot, a lot of work and good work and thoughtful work and, and we just very, very appreciate it. So thank you.
I want to thank my team for presenting with me today. So thank you very much. And I want to thank all of our faculty and staff and our administrators who've been engaged in this work and continue to be and we look forward to updating you again on our progress in our, in our meeting. Jim?
I have a, sorry, a question of the survey. Anyway, I said this, but I didn't, it didn't stick to me. When is that, the repeat of the survey planned? Is this an annual?
So we, we haven't discussed that yet, but this is our benchmark survey. So we have to administer it at a different time, point in time to see if we've made progress. But I need to have a better understanding of what that looks like and look at time frame as based on panoramas, recommendations. So the statistical analysis is accurate.
They have some recommendations up near site about the frequency and the space between. So that is definitely something we'll have to run through our council before determining the next implementation.
Okay, sorry. And so just a premature ask, I guess.
No, I think it's a good question. We're just not ready to say this is one of the second administration will be.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Philip. Joining us.
Thank you so much, Philip.
And Ellen and Jenny will come back up and I'll, I'll very quickly finish the superintendent's update and then I'll go over the two calendars. Okay. Right. So I just wanted to provide the community an update on our numbers. Of course, we are in a place where we still have 100% of our students attending. We've self-select to K through eight and we have half of our students in the morning attending, really may have a half attending in the afternoon. And then we have some, a few students who are attending in full day based on their specific needs. I wanted to show you what our numbers were this week of students that are fully remote. We still have a large number of yearly students who are opting to be fully remote this week and hopefully at our next Board of Education meeting that number will go down. Just in terms of our update with our faculty and staff, Tony, did you want to add any additional commentary? We've been engaging in this process that every meeting's up.
It's actually the numbers won't count in both categories, so that's a good thing slightly, but no, we're pretty consistent there.
Okay. And so in terms of our quarantine numbers, now that we have new guidance from the Westchester Department of Health, we've seen a significant reduction in the number of students who are quarantined. You'll see a small uptick and that is a result of students who were covered under the old guideline in our old practices before we switched our lunch process and our bus assignment process. We had a, we had a pocket of students who had to quarantine, but moving forward, we shouldn't have that happen based on our new procedures in our K through eight buildings. So we should see very relatively small numbers moving forward. And the chart that we've been sending out Friday has been pretty well received. So if any, if any community members have suggestions about that particular chart and how we might be able to communicate differently, I would certainly welcome that. But Vicki and Jane and I met with our advisory committee and they had recommended we keep the chart as it played out. It was a, a nice way for them to understand district-wide what was happening within our school community. Okay. So two, two really important updates. So the first is we had our BiNEXT tests delivered today to the district. We didn't, initially they said the department, so they weren't going to send them. But then after, and I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but after Governor Cuomo said that local health departments could make decisions regarding students participating in high-risk sports, I was contacted by the Department of Health and they agreed to release us these, the BiNEXT tests. And so we're, we're going to take two approaches in terms of testing since we're not required to do so by the New York State Department of Health because we're not so. First is that we are likely going to begin very small and have staff who self-select engage in a testing process so we can understand and fine tune our own procedures. And then I anticipate that on Friday, if the local health department allows us to move forward with high-risk sports, that there will be a testing component associated to that based on comments that have been made by the county executive publicly. So then that would be the second group of individuals that we would engage in our BiNEXT screening process with. So between now and our next Board of Education meeting, we'll be planning on how to begin engaging in a testing process with a soft sample of staff and potentially students based on requirements in order to move forward with certain high-risk sports. I'm not sure yet. Just let us know by Friday.
Do the health requirements not district requirements?
I, so in the, publicly, our county executive has, has said that if, if high-risk sports are approved, there will likely be a testing requirement associated with that in order for those contests to take place. But they're supposed to let us know by Friday what they are. So I think what's important for this community to know is if that happens on Friday, we have tests in hand, we will be ready. And because we have tests in hand, we should engage in a screening process that's ongoing right now and we'd like to start doing that with our staff. Go ahead, Paul.
It's probably a really silly question, but why is boys lacrosse high-risk, females lacrosse is low risk? Isn't it the same sport with different people playing it?
So we don't make those distinctions, but theoretically.
It's actually quite different. There's more contact than boy contact. If you see the games, they are, they are different.
Which is controversial and that's been a controversial issue. The rules are different.
The rules are different.
The rules are different.
I don't need to compete that all high-risk sports will be permitted to personnel. And that will be unfortunate for some of our student athletes. But I think that the reality and situation we're in, we're a little more ardent. But I think it's important for the community to understand that that decision is not lost, addressed with the district.
Can you clarify? Because there's a lot of, there are a lot of news alerts today that it was definitely allowed. And I think it may be confusing for people that like news was sent out that it's allowed in Hudson Valley, but they're still waiting county by county or, you know.
Okay, so the local health department has to authorize us to move forward with high-risk sports and they have not done that yet. I have not been notified of that yet. Not supposed to be notified. So what we've been doing, what Jason has been doing, and this is on our website if you're not a parent in grade seven through 12, is he's been providing updates. So we provided one as recently as tonight, just so people can understand where we are in the process. And so that's where this chart was generated from because we sent this out to the community so they could understand the start and end dates for the potential seasons that will release instead. The other thing we are going to move forward with is that we're going to start opening up our weight room tomorrow to teams. We have a clear protocol that we'll be following that was pushed out to our parents as well. It's my hope that once we open up our facilities again outside, that maybe we can open the weight room up to just students in general who want to work out. But I'm not comfortable doing that at this time based on where we are. I think we should start very small and have it completely controlled by by coaches who will be monitoring their team specifically. So there should be some more significant information that we should drive in the near future around athletics. And then at our next meeting, I'll share with you how we plan to basically pilot our first round of testing with our staff. Unless, of course, we need to expedite that process because we need to begin testing students, either way, we'll be ready. I also wanted to share with you that the DEP had provided comments to our application that we needed to file with them in relation to the ZO property. So more work needs to be done in terms of answering those questions. So I asked our attorney who's representing us in the application process with the planning board to actually file the extension so that we have additional time to complete all the requirements necessary to have the final proposal in front of the planning board for approval. So I did want to update you and share with you this evening. So that is the end of the superintendent's report. So now I'd like to.
Can you go back, can you go back to the first page?
First page? This?
No, next one. I'm sorry. That one, if they're. So is this 50% are onsite attendance, 50% virtual attendance in my school? How many of those 50% of the students are actually coming to school?
Well, it's 930 students attending on a regular basis. So we have like 1380. So 930 students are attending school during one school day out of 1300, like 1350 students.
So about three quarters are actually onsite?
Yes. A large majority of our students are still attending.
Or maybe.
So that 903 are remote, very remote students. They're remote.
900 are remote?
Of the total number of early students who could attend school on a given day. 903 of them attend school remotely.
So only 400 are attending in person?
Approximately, yes.
That gives me other questions, but I don't have them right now.
Okay. All right. So that's the end of the superintendent's report. So now, David, if we could transition to the calendars. There's two calendars on the agenda tonight. First is a revision for our calendar for this school year. So so tonight, that's next school year's calendar. This is this school year's calendar. Yes, this is it. So I'm asking if the board would consider extending our half-days on Wednesday to support professional learning and planning in the afternoon since we're remaining in our current hybrid model, particularly with our key students due to our pottin' and our reduction in our ability for teachers to collaborate with each other and communicate with parents. So I do apologize. This is pre-late for families. I should have brought this up at our first meeting in January. So I apologize for if I placed any of our families in a pondry about next week. But I am asking that you consider moving forward and increasing our, the amount of days that we leverage a half-day schedule at least through March. But with the understanding it will likely be through the end of the school year now knowing what we know about the pandemic and the and the likelihood that we won't be back to a regular structure anytime soon. Okay? So that's the first. And then the second is this is typically the meeting where I share the draft calendar with the community. So we'll push, if the board moves forward to approve the, this year's calendars revisions tonight, we'll push that out tomorrow morning with our draft calendar. Because what typically the board does is we present the draft calendar to the community and then we'll take feedback before the calendars presented, the draft calendar presented for your consideration for adoption at the first meeting in February. So this calendar was really complicated to create. I tried very hard to retain that two-week break at the holiday, but I just wasn't able to do that this year because of where, you know, some of the required days off that we needed to provide in the calendar because they're New York State holidays and some religious holidays that we typically recognize. So if you look at the calendar, you'll see that in December, we will be attending the first Monday and Tuesday of that holiday, first week of the holiday. And then the second week will be off. You'll also notice that on this calendar in June, we've added the 20th as a day off. That's a required holiday in New York State for June 13th.
Juneteenth.
Juneteenth. And this year that falls on Saturday. So we don't, we don't recognize that as a calendar. But because it falls on a Sunday next year, we are required to recognize that on Monday. So that nuance plus where the Jewish holidays fell in September and the start date of the school year just created a calendar that looks very different this year compared with last year. Because you'll see that we'll start school on the first and then we'll have three days off the following week. But no, that's okay. So if people have any feedback that'd like to provide on the calendar, they can certainly do so. We have real limited availability to move anything. But we can certainly take feedback from our, from our community. And at the next meeting, we can discuss that feedback and then I'll have a final calendar for your consideration to approve. Any questions on that? Well, the holidays are, you know, obviously it's a cyclical issue. We've been able to have the lock up two weeks for a couple of years now. But, you know, there are a lot of constraints and the mandated number of instructional days. So I think we knew that we couldn't always have the two-week lock. And some people really like it, some people don't.
We have that every year.
Yeah.
I also think, I know a lot of people wish to start. Traditionally, we've started after Labor Day, not every year. Kind of changes here. But I also think it's very unusual in terms of the calendar. I don't think Rosh Hashanah has ever fallen on Labor Day in recent memory. So that created a challenge for that, you know. If we did not start after Labor Day, we'd be starting until after Labor Day, we'd be starting quite late. So I think that created a challenge, I'm sure.
Yeah, I know I've said this before, but I actually think that especially with Christmas falling on the weekend, having a half week of school before will not be rejected by all parents. I think that for families where all the adults need to go to work, it's often very hard to take that whole week. So I think, and whereas I'm sure there will be people who don't like this calendar, I'm sure you will also have many people who are appreciative of having a partial school week that way.
Does New Year's Day not get recognized on the third?
If you could just go down, David. No? Yes. So for our employees, it does not. Okay. Okay. So that's the end of the superintendent's report. Thank you for indulging us. This is pretty long.
Thank you very much.
But important. So I will, sorry. Okay. So I will take up item 1.2.1, which is the revision of the calendar. May I have a motion and a second to approve item 1.2.1? The revised 2020, 21 district calendar. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now we'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have committee reports? I know that we'll have communications committee and CARES committee, but the facilities committee. Do you want to start with facilities?
Sure. So the facilities committee met back in December on the 4th and the 17th discussing recommendations that came to budget planning for the year or so, or for the next year. So just what we are recommending is for the groups to increase or to add $260,000 to the next budget to do some repairs for the West Orchard groups. It won't be everything, but the partial repairs, that'll affect the interfund transfer going from $3,000 to $360,000 if that's approved. And there'll be a five-year plan for the rest of West Orchard to really bring back and raffling groups as well. We also made a recommendation on the gym HVAC project to address the steam pipe leak and the boiler plant that's going to be added. We're recommending that rather than build a new structure for across $300,000, we're recommending that we actually use some of the third locker room and save those funds and locate the boiler while within the existing space we have. So that'll obviously require a little bit more discussion, but that project's expected to cost somewhere between $600 and $650,000. So that's a good savings. And the recommendation will also be to have a voter referendum to use funds from the Capital Projects Reserve to, which is currently at, well, as of the end of last school year, $1,000, or $1,569,797. So we have enough to move some of those funds over for that project. And then finally, the early L building. The air conditioning system is the old one. The ductwork is intact, but the, actually machinery to run the air conditioning in there is undersized for the space. However, we're recommending not to fund that right now in the budget because the air is still moving. So we have adequate ventilation. The cooling is just undersized for the space. So that'll, the estimate is at somewhere between $300 and $400,000 when that gets done. But we are not recommending to do that in the next budget.
And that's the facilities boss. John Warren wants to add anything?
That was great.
John, do you want to add? Oh, I'm just asking if you wanted to add anything.
Oh, no.
Facilities. Okay.
That's perfect.
All right. Great. Any other committees?
Yeah, the green committee met this past week. And we reviewed, reviewed some of the focus areas we've been working on, such as geothermal and solar. And we had some good feedback on that, especially the solar, a member of our committee actually works in the solar industry. He believes we're doing the right thing by pushing that project forward a little bit. Because technology's changing and that we'll be able to get more effective use of solar in the future. The other thing is we had, we were asked and we accepted three students on our committee. So we have, I think there were, I'm not sure if they're all from the Sustainability Club, we have one junior and two freshman out of the committee with us. So they were all excited and we were excited to have them and get their input and feedback. The last thing is that, you know, the board received about seven or eight letters from some students in Diana Goldberg's class at Seven Bridges asking the board to take a look at renewable energy and sustainability and renewable solar and photovoltaics for electric panels. So to that, I spent an hour on Zoom call with her students and we reviewed what the board was doing. I think we, feedback we got was that the students were passionate about this, but they didn't really, really understand what was happening. And they were asking us to do something. When they explained what we were doing, they had, they were very surprised that we had done such extensive work on the survey and were really pushing forward for sustainability and environmental savings. So I learned from them and we get to learn from us.
Yeah. And thank you for answering those questions on our behalf, Warren, and for meeting with those students. It's really great to always stay in touch with students so that they understand what we do. You know, it's kind of a stretch to expect them to know. So it's, it's a great thing that you were able to do that. So thank you.
I can jump in with, we did meet this week with our communications advisory committee and three community members who have been very helpful in telling us how effective and efficient our communication procedures are. And we talked about various communications that we had sent out either from the board, the district, with regard to a number of matters. Everything from the COVID information that we're updating, the insurrection that took place at the Capitol, the farm-based code. And we discussed many ways that they are receiving information, what's helpful, what areas can be improved. And we also had a discussion, which I know we're following up on, that we have sent some communications by mail, certain postcards, change of our domain name, things like that, that some members of the community seek to get all of our mailings and some do not get all of them. So we are looking into that to make sure, because we certainly want everyone to get everything that we are sending out. We do send it out on multiple platforms. So usually everyone gets the information. But we want to make sure that we're reaching everyone that needs to get it. So we're going to look into that. But it was very helpful to get input. They were very positive, as Christine mentioned earlier, about the new, you know, weekly ways of summing up cases in our school and where we are right now in terms of COVID. They found that method very helpful. So we got a lot of positive feedback and some constructive feedback too. So I thought that was really beneficial. Did you want to add anything?
No, that was a very comprehensive summary. I just think it's so helpful to have an outside perspective on what we're doing because we have sort of an inside perspective and it's sometimes hard to know how people are receiving it. So it's really tremendously helpful to have this group.
Yeah, I think it's been credit.
Work with us and they are, they have excellent insights. So we really appreciate that.
And I can just also just quickly mention since I'm a liaison to the Chappaq School Foundation and they had their at-home event this week, which was a dumpling-making session with Chef Dale Tal, I think it's pronounced, or Talby, I'm not sure. And who's the chef of Goosefeather. I know a bunch of us were on there making dumplings at home. And they were good. They were delicious. They really were. There's a lot of stuff going on. But I thought it was, it was a great event. I think there were maybe about 140-plus people on that Zoom. So it was fun. It was really a nice way to connect. I know that they probably raised a good amount of money and that they will pour back into our school system very generously. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. I thought it was really very successful.
And I wonder if, like our teachers, whether they'll keep some of these new ideas moving forward even when we don't have to be virtual. I think that's a fantastic.
It was.
I wish I could have done it, but.
Yeah.
Super fun. Sounds like fun. Also, Holly and I, we attended the CARES meeting on January 19. And so Christine talked about that in the presentation. But just to summarize, that we took a look at the student survey and just decided on our areas of focus, which are English and Common Language, Professional Development, and focusing on culture and climate for BIPOC students. So it's. So it's, it's work that's very large in scope, but I think that that community as well was very helpful in providing different perspectives from the districts and for the board. So Holly, if you have anything else to add? No, I think we've covered it all. Any other committees that I missed? Okay, good. Let's see, so now we are at the public comment period. I see one person in the audience, oh, two, two who could possibly comment. So as you know, we welcome public comments. And in respect to each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And of course, board members may be contacted via email or phone. And after the public comment period, the board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding the comments presented. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, please step up to the microphone and introduce yourselves. Go ahead.
We're going to pass on our comments to Mike and you.
Okay. I hear there will be no public comments tonight. But we're glad that you, that we have you in the audience nonetheless. We appreciate both our PTA president and vice president. All right. So we'll move on to approvals and modifications. I'd like to ask for motions to approve items 3.1 and 3.2. These are to accept the minutes of the January 13, 2021 board meeting and the minutes of the January 21, 2021 special board meeting. May I have a motion and a second to accept these minutes?
I agree. I'll second.
Any comments? The minutes of, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Recommend 4.1 instructional as presented. Okay, I will move item 4.1 instructional as presented. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented. Okay, I will move item 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, and any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So we use the consent agenda so that the board may make more effective use of its time to adopt in a single motion relatively routine matters. So any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may indicate so, so that item will be considered and voted on separately. So this preserves the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So it's recommended that the board amend, approve the following consent agenda. So I.
I'd actually, I'd like to remove item 5.3 from the consent agenda and take it separately.
Okay, so may I have a motion and a second to remove item 5.3 from the consent agenda?
I'll move back to the three, we remove it.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So for now, we'll take on the consent agenda without 5.3. May I have a motion and a second to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which will be items 5.1, 5.2, and then 5.4 through 5.7?
I move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these particular items? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take up item 5.3. I will move item 5.3. May I have a second? Any discussion?
Yeah, actually, if it's, if I'd like to just make a disclosure that I am currently employed by the Public Consulting Group that we are discussing this amendment, amended contract with. I do not have any ownership or stock interest in the company, and the work I perform is contact tracing and is unrelated to this contract. However, I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that, and I intend to abstain from voting on this.
I would like to, my son is also doing the same thing as a contract contractor, and I don't have any conflict of interest here, so I will vote for this, but thank you, Holly.
Thank you to everybody working as a contract contractor.
Yeah, thank you, Holly. I'd just like to add, for anyone wondering, we did get advice from our attorney. And so whenever there's a situation like this, as long as the board member wouldn't be performing duties or be involved in the procurement of what's involved in the contract, and the compensation received would not be affected by the contractual relationship that we're voting on today. And if these facts are the case, then there, there is no conflict of interest. And Holly would be able to vote, but it's, she's abstaining at her option. Although we were told that if there were to be a tie, that she would actually be obligated to vote. Because there really is no conflict of interest. But I appreciate that you want to abstain. So all in favor of item 5.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Okay, one abstention. All right. Let me get back to the agenda. Okay, now we're up to facilities. Item 6.1, we have a change order for the contractor SNL Plumbing and Heating Corp. For project at Horace Greeley High School. May I have a motion to acknowledge this change order in item 6.1?
I move.
A second? Okay, any, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Financials, we have item 7.1. May I have a motion to approve 7.1, which is to acknowledge the receipt of the claims auditor report for December 2020?
I'll move 7.1.
I'll second 7.1. Any questions or comments on this agenda? If we all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we're up to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, February 10, 2021, at 7:30 PM at the Horace Greeley High School Auditorium. And following that will be another meeting on Wednesday, March 3, 2021, at 7:30 PM. We will receive the superintendent's budget proposal at that time. It will take place at the Horace Greeley High School Auditorium. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 10:22 PM.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.